Good morning. It's 10:00 AM on March 10, 2020, and I hereby call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. And if you care to, please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Now, I will open public comment number one, and this is...
Adoption of the agenda?
Oh, for heaven's sake. Thank you. I always want to get meetings done quicker, and I think if I do every other agenda item, we'll get done faster. It doesn't work that way because I have good coworkers who say, "Excuse me." So, I would entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved. Second?
Headens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Now, we'll go to public comment number one. Comment period for the public to address topics on today's agenda. And if there's any members of the public who would like to avail themselves of this opportunity, please come over to the microphone. Seeing nobody headed to the microphone, I will close public comment number one. We'll go into agency reports, and we'll start with Les White with Mary Greeley Medical Center Home Health Services. Good morning, Les.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Les White. I'm the Director of Mary Greeley Home Health, Hospice, and Story County Public Health. Just going to share a little bit with you today about our services and the number of folks that we serve in Story County. But I do think it's important for everyone to realize that we do go outside of Story County as well. We service a 50-mile radius. So, as you're looking with Ames being in the center point, we go up into Iowa Falls, over down around into Fort Dodge, come into Jefferson, come down around, then we go beyond Des Moines, but really truly about Ankeny is about as far as our referrals come. Then we come back up on the Marshalltown side and back up into Iowa Falls. Our mission follows that of Mary Greeley Medical Center. It's to advance health through specialized care and personal touch. And our vision is very simple, and that is to be the best. With our home care services, we offer skilled nursing service in the home. And along with those skilled nursing services, we also have physical therapy as well, occupational therapy and speech therapy. In addition to that, we also have social workers that help with that. Our average daily census for nursing and physical therapy, our therapies run about 110 per day. Over the past year, we have served 373 Story County residents. I anticipate that to maintain, if not exceed, this next fiscal year. In addition to that is our homemaker service. There's two components to our homemaker service. We have environmental homemaker. That is really truly environmental. We go and we help in their homes. We help with cleaning. We help with laundry. We'll help go buy groceries and put them away. Just those environmental tasks that some individuals are not able to perform. The other side of that is our personal care homemaker program. That is the personal touch piece of it. We can help individuals if they need help getting bathing, maybe getting dressed, with some exercises, any of those kind of personal aspects we can help with. With that program, they do get a registered nurse, goes to their house every 60 days to evaluate how services are going, and just to evaluate the patient themselves, to make sure that they don't need any further services. Our average daily census for our homemaker program, we run about 105 a day. And over the past year, we've served 330 folks in Story County. We do a survey every year with our homemaker services to see how we're doing. And this past year, 95% of our responses said that they would not be able to live in their home without our assistance. So, it is a very valuable service to Story County. I think in addition to just not the physical aspect, but for those folks, it's also that social aspect, that they have somebody coming to their house once a week, maybe for a couple hours, and spending some time with them and socializing. So, I think that component is important as well. In addition to that, we have our program called Transitional Care. We've also began calling and pulling in our surgical care program. So, for individuals that are hospitalized and that they're at high risk for rehospitalization, it's those folks with congestive heart failure, chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, sepsis, pneumonia, and those also that have had colon surgery, back surgery, hips, or knee surgery. We go out and we do one free visit to the client. That visit is supported financially through our local public health grant as a health promotion visit. And we do a variety of things. Number one is medications, because we all know that medications can be an issue for individuals. It's easy to get confused on what you're supposed to take and what you're not supposed to take, or what you have in the home. So, that's really, we go out and we do that, number one. Take a look at their medications, make sure they have the right medications. Well, first, that they have them, that they've picked them up from the hospital. Number two, that they have the right medications. And then really, number three, do they know how to take those medications? We also, depending on the situation, for our surgical patients, we do a dressing change and then assess that incision. Then we report back to the physician. We also do kind of a home safety assessment as well, just to make sure, are they safe in their home? Are there things that could interfere with them, living independent or not living in a well state? Over the past year, fiscal year, we served 640 clients in Story County with this visit, and I really anticipate that to increase over this next year.
Les, is that 640 in the transitional care itself? So, what about these other areas? I like numbers. I like to see them. I like them in the reports.
Yep. So, for our homemaker service, it's 330. And then for our skilled nursing, it's 373.
And did you say, when you talked about the skilled?
Uh huh.
I think you said 110 a day?
Yep.
That's what I wrote down. Okay.
Yep. Our average daily census for our skilled, which includes nursing and physical therapy, is about 110. And our average daily census for homemaker is 105.
So, would it be possible after today to get, like, this PowerPoint, but have those numbers shifted?
Yeah, I sure can do that.
Thanks. Okay.
Story County Public Health, we provide, we have, I have two nurses, Sherri Zook and Teresa Ferrari. We provide clinics throughout Story County. There's two aspects of that. There's our senior health clinics. Those include both our foot clinics, as well as blood pressure clinics. And foot clinics, we have seen 1,400, we had 1,476 foot clinics this past fiscal year, and we had 273 blood pressure clinics. So, have served quite a few individuals in Story County. We do these clinics not only in Ames, but also Nevada, Colo, Huxley, and Story City.
And Les, what did you say, the 1,400 were what clinic?
1,476 foot clinics.
Oh, foot.
Mm-hmm. As seniors, sometimes it's a little bit more difficult to reach your feet.
Sure, sure. No, I just didn't hear what you were saying, what you said, though.
Yeah. So, I know people think sometimes, "Well, that seems kind of odd," but really truly, as you get older, you understand. Also, a big part of it, as you would talk to me today, this is the biggest thing right now, is disease investigation and surveillance. This is where the COVID-19 falls into place. We get our direction from the Iowa Department of Public Health, and then follow with disease investigation and surveillance. Over the past fiscal year, we followed up on 168 different disease investigations. And that could include tuberculosis. It could include measles. We've had some incidents with E. coli, those types of things. So, we do follow up with that. It really has been over 587 hours that we have spent with disease investigation. And of course, that has now included our COVID-19. That will be in this next fiscal year. Immunization clinics, I skipped over that. We provide immunization clinics in our office. Our office is located across from the hospital. We offer them during the week, as well as two evenings a week, or a month. And we've had 206 individuals, and we've given over 400 vaccines to those folks. Also, related to immunizations, the staff go out and do immunization audits with all the preschools and then K-12 schools within Story County, to make sure that everybody is current on their immunizations.
Do you also go out to, like, group homes and stuff and do some immunization clinics? Or are they all intern, or do the folks all come here?
No. We can go out and do clinics as well. We go out sometimes to those types of folks and to their staff mainly, and do, like, hepatitis B vaccines?
Gotcha.
Or flu vaccine clinics. Yep. So, we can go out as well. Community education, as people call and want education about various things, we're always happy to go out and visit with them. We usually go to Iowa State at least a couple times a year and visit with their, there's a community health group out there, and we visit with them. Another big piece is emergency management. Currently, we are part of a, what they call the Coalition B. It's six counties. That will be merging with Coalition A, so we will become one of 14 counties. So, moving to a little bit bigger group, which I think will be fine, we do get some funding through, emergency preparedness funding through here as well. With this group, we do do different, various types of disaster drills. With the public health, we just completed one related to an anthrax drill. And so, we actually went over to Marshalltown. We picked up the medication, practiced that, bringing it back. How would we distribute that? We chose this time to do what we call closed pods. So, that's where we have a group, and we just go to them and distribute the medication. So, we didn't do a practice this time of a big community group. But usually, once a year, we do do that with RSVP. They help us with those. And we do some education with them and how we would handle community-type pods. So, that's really our emergency management piece of that. So, any questions about public health? I'll talk about COVID-19 a little bit more at the end.
So, the piece, you said, of emergency management, you said you get funding through here, meaning Story County or emergency management?
No, local public health. It's through public health.
Public health. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Just to round out our services in relationship to hospice, we do provide hospice care in the home. Our average daily census there runs about 26. And we, and we also have an Israel Family Hospice House, and that is 10 beds. Our average daily census there is around five. Bereavement program, our person in charge of bereavement is Mike Wyler. He is at the Israel Family Hospice House, but he's really done a nice job in enhancing our bereavement services. He does that through visits, pre and post death, as well as doing different kinds of support groups. So, he does, like, a coffee support group. He works with Stevens Memorial Chapel for his support group. Every year around the holidays, we have a Tree of Love, where we send out invitations to folks from the past year that have lost a loved one to come back and visit. He does a formal, six-week support group as well. It really is very structured, and they talk about the physical and the emotional and the spiritual components of bereavement. This past year, we added a new program. It's called We Honor Veterans. It's a, the veteran sponsors this program, and really, it's twofold. Number one, it provides education to our staff related to caring for those veterans at the end of life. And number two, then we're able to recognize those veterans at the end of life as well. We do so. We have a nice certificate that we give them, as well as we have a lapel pen, too, that we give them to honor them for their service. So, really, as we look, our challenges, opportunities, changes, things that have happened this past year, we did, we actually, for home health and hospice, we've been a year now into our new computerized documentation system. We will be bringing up public health now this next year. So, then we will all be on the same system. It is Epic System. We feel that that really enhances our communication with our partners, our health team partners, because we are on the same system now as Mary Greeley, as well as McFarlane Clinic. And just really helps with that continuity of care. We're able to have access to information in a timely manner, and has really improved the quality of care that we provide. The Iowa Department of Public Health requires you to, your public health, to do a community survey every five years. This happens to be 2020 is our year for our community survey. We are going about it, maybe different than they have in the past. We run this through, I have a group called Story County Quality Living Alliance, or Squala. And really, it is with that group that I'm able to manage this task through Story County. What we decided first is, we came up with a question, you know, "What are we looking for?" And it seems pretty general and broad, but it's worked for us. "What are the health and human service needs of Story County and why?" So, what we did at the beginning is, we presented this question to service, human service groups in Story County. And when we did that, we asked them this question, but we also asked them for any data that they had available to us that we could bring together. There is, you know, information on the internet as well. And so, there's community, or county health rankings, which we use. So, we went in and pulled all of the data. I do, I was lucky, I have a fellow, his name is Les Miller. He's a retired ISU professor, and he is willing to help me with all of this. So, he is gathering the data for us and analyzing it. And then, we were, we had about seven to eight of the facilities or the groups that were able to provide more data. He looked at that, and from that, then we pulled out 11 items that we really wanted to focus on with Part II of our survey. And that was, we put together both a printed survey, as well as Survey Monkey, with these 11 items, and then some other questions related to that. And again, pushed that out to all the human service folks. We took printed copies, have been taken up to the libraries in a variety of towns here in Story County, for, like, our clinics that we do for public health. We took the survey there. So, we're now in the process, March 1 was our deadline for that. So, now we're in the process of looking at all of that data and bringing that together. So, the third component, we really wanted to make sure that we hear from the people of Story County. And does that, what we hear, really match the data that we gather? So, we had, have had two focus groups. We had one in Nevada and one in Zering. And then at the end of the month, we have one in Maxwell. And with those, again, we're able, we'll take those 11 items, and we go through and we talk about that with the focus group. So, we're getting a nice, it's been very interesting to hear what folks have to say. And again, we will be gathering all that information. And I have to have it to the public health, Iowa Department of Public Health by next February. My goal is, we'll have this all completed by the end of the year, and I'll be able then to bring all that information and that presentation back to you. We also, there's always reimbursement things, or issues, I guess, changes going on in my world. One of them is related to home health. The Medicare, traditional Medicare, had a new way that they wanted to pay us. It's called Patient Driven Grouping Model, or PDGM. Really, what that did, it focused on therapies. Our reimbursement for therapies is not as high as it used to be. Also, it changed our documentation somewhat, because they do look at that, on how we get paid, as well as our diagnosis. So, we just started that in January. So, just getting into that, and I'll be able to report to you next year how well that is doing. Probably the biggest difference is, we went from a 60-day payment model to a 30-day payment model. Also, we had a new Medicaid Managed Care Organization join us this year in July, Iowa Total Care. So, once, we always get a new group like that, we have to go through and make sure that we have the correct authorization process for them, so that we will get reimbursed for the services we provide. We're pretty fortunate that we're able to, if that reimbursement doesn't occur in a timely manner, we're able to carry our patients. And they really truly don't know any different. It's really a seamless process for them. Staffing, as you all know, in Story County, we have a very low unemployment rate. So, we have struggled this past year with some of our entry-level positions, such as our healthcare aides, which are very important to our program. And we have awesome healthcare aides. So, we are trying to kind of go outside the box a little bit and think about different things. We've always hired healthcare aides that have certified nursing assistant certifications. So, we thought, we have a homemaker program, the environmental homemaker program that I talked about, that, you know, they don't have any personal touch with the patient. So, they really don't need to be a CNA. So, we posted a homemaker position. And actually, we had a great response to that. So, we'll be able to take that person, and we'll just schedule our environmental homemakers with her. Our hope is that she enjoys her position. Then we'll give her opportunities to go back to school if she would choose to, and then she could move up and become a healthcare aide, and then on up the ladder. So, we got our first one hired, and we'll see if, if our thoughts, if it works out. Lastly, COVID-19. At this point in time, you know, it's really planning, preparedness. There is really no reason to panic. We, I just got the numbers last night at 6:00. I think everybody already hears it on the news, but there are eight positive cases in Iowa. Seven of those, though, came from the cruise ship that went to Egypt. The other one is in Potawatomi County. That one, that individual actually had visited in California. So, thinking that possibly could be where they contacted it. As far as testing, there's been 32 negatives in the state, and there are 11 pending tests at this time. Monitoring-wise, asymptomatic, there's 67 people right now that are under, in Iowa, that they are monitoring. There are none that have symptoms, and we have completed 40 of those. So, again, those are the numbers for the state of Iowa.
Les, for this COVID-19, what separates it from the flu as far as severity or all of this panic?
Yes.
As compared to how many people die of the flu every year?
Which is still way more than have died from COVID-19. That's a little bit hard to answer. My thoughts are, number one, it's new, right? Anytime you have some type of new infectious disease, it is scary to individuals. And I've visited with Dr. Fulton, the infectious disease person at Mary Greeley, and that's what he says, too. And he says, you know, "This may not be the end of those kinds of things that happen." We all live very close. We live on top of each other, as he puts it anymore. So, these kinds of different infectious diseases are very possible. The other thing is, it seems to be highly transmittable. And right now, we're under airborne precautions with it, but they're thinking, maybe we'll be moving to contact isolation-type precautions with that. But you think about all the times that you touch things, and then you touch your face, washing your hands. I mean, it's really those very basic things that we need to do. But yet, when you think about yourself, how many times do you, do you, you know, touch your face or whatever? So, the other piece of it, I did just hear yesterday that possibly people, I think there's just so much they don't know about it, is what's scary. But it could be, you will show symptoms maybe five days, I believe, after exposure, is what we heard yesterday. And up until then, I hadn't really heard anything like that. And, you know, people are being self-quarantined for up to 14. Some of them are mandatory quarantined, if they're coming from mainland China or Iran, those folks. But otherwise, it's self-quarantined. And people, so far, I've only heard of one, I think, I can't remember what state that was, that they had somebody that chose not to do that. So, then you have, you would have to get a court order if you felt like that was needed.
But is it any more, for an individual who is susceptible, it's no more dangerous than the flu, correct?
No. No. Nope. As long as, you know, I heard today, if you had high blood pressure, maybe you're a little bit more susceptible to being ill, but yeah.
What we keep hearing in, in the media is, if there's underlying health conditions that people then are very vulnerable.
So, you look at your older adults, and what's interesting, and Dr. Fulton just confirmed this, that our kids haven't really, you haven't heard much about the kids, and they haven't been infected, which is interesting. And he said, either they have it, and we don't know it, and they tolerate it, lots better than adults, or there's something about them that they're not getting it. So, that's kind of interesting. But yeah, it's your older adults that have more comorbidities, just seem to be the people that are having more trouble, or that are passing away from this.
What about people who've had pneumonia before? Because I've been told that people who have pneumonia before are more susceptible to getting pneumonia again.
Yeah. I don't know. I guess I...
Probably.
Possibly. But if you don't really have any effects from that, like any chronic obstructive lung-type issues from the pneumonia, then I wouldn't, I wouldn't say you would be any more at risk than anybody else.
To me, it sounds like there's still a fair amount of unknowns.
Yes.
It's constantly evolving and getting more information, but we don't have it all.
Right. Every day, something different changes. We do participate, we have, just Mondays, we have something related, specific to public health. On Wednesdays, we listen to a call from Iowa Department of Public Health every Wednesday to kind of get the latest. Also, there's Coalition calls, too, that we've been participating in. So, there's lots of opportunities. Besides, we've been meeting weekly with Mary Greeley, their Incident Command, so meeting with them as well every week. Also, we've been meeting, we've met with Iowa State. They've been managing it very well. I really give kudos to them, bringing back their students from Italy, isolating them. They've done a really nice job. We have another meeting with them on Wednesday to talk more about student health with them. We've also met with the city of Ames and some folks that work there. And then tomorrow, there's a meeting with the county. So, one of us will be present at that as well. So, at this point in time, we've just, like I said, been participating in lots of planning activities and preparing.
You've been in, in public health for a long time. Okay.
For a little while.
You're seasoned. You're seasoned. Okay. So, has there ever been this kind of panic about the flu? I mean, in your time?
No. But do you remember H1N1?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. There a little bit of panic about that. That was somewhat, probably the most recent chaotic time that I remember. We did massive immunization clinics. We had, you know, there was certain folks, there was a limit on the vaccine. There were certain folks that couldn't get the vaccine, and they got very upset with us. That's probably the last time. I don't foresee that this time. Number one, they're still saying it's about a year out before we're going to have any type of vaccine for this. And by that time, providers will have access to the vaccine. We may have to do some type of open clinics for the county, and we'll be happy to do so if that's the case. But that was the last time. And that was, that was an interesting time for us as well.
Thank you. Yes, I remember the long lines waiting to get the vaccination
Yeah.
at that particular, particular time. And I understand the concerns that families are at with the COVID-19 because of remembering kind of the H1N1 situation and what, you know, they, they want that vaccine right away. They want to make sure they're protected or their loved one is protected.
Yep. Very true. Very true.
I have one final question for you, for the general public, wanting to know, say, good information sources versus things not to pay attention to.
Yep. I would direct them to the Iowa Department of Public Health website. And if you go on there, there is lots of information for a variety of folks. They have things specific for businesses. They have things specific, I know, Lynda, you'd asked me about the jail, and I found something. The CDC website's good as well. So, I found something, some specific guidance for emergency-type folks. There's, they've done a very nice job. And I know Mary Greeley, our website directs some, we have a link right on our front page to both the Iowa Department of Public Health and the CDC websites. So, they're both very good, and it's, it's just laid out very nicely.
Okay. I have looked at some of the IDPH stuff, and I know you've been, you've done webinars, and that seems to be a good source.
Yes.
And what I particularly liked is the documents. It seemed they were dating them.
Yes.
They were putting the date on, which is very helpful if you know that this is something they put out last week versus something they put out yesterday. Because you said, it's, we're getting more information every day, so I appreciated that.
Yep. Also, Governor Reynolds did sign a disaster proclamation last evening. So, they'll have their Incident Command Center open. So they'll have their Incident Command Center open at all the time. I see Keith back there, I'm sure he's very well aware. So lots of things probably still to come.
Okay.
So in closing, I have an awesome team and I'm very proud of our services and I look forward to serving Story County in the next year. So other questions that you guys have for me? And I'll make sure, I'll get you all those numbers. It's very easy, no problem.
I don't have any additional questions. I just want to thank you for coming in, providing the information of just what you do, but then also answering some of our questions because we do get a lot, particularly surrounding the COVID-19. And so having a little direction is very helpful.
Yeah. And I did this time, I hadn't done this in the past, but I thought, I left my card there for you guys. So call, email, whatever works for you. I always have my phone with me and email, so I'll be happy to help.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Les.
Yes.
Okay. And next report then is, oh, you look like you were, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, I'm making sure that she pulled her stick.
Oh, okay, got it. Then next, we have Ann Owens, Volunteer Center, and your report. Good morning, Ann.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy Tuesday.
Yeah.
Thank you, you too.
I do know, my calendar said it's a National Pack Your Lunch Day, so I, of course, overslept and didn't bring mine with me.
I didn't either.
So hopefully tomorrow, take yourself out to lunch. So thank you again for the opportunity to come and speak. I know I was here a few weeks ago and went through some of these numbers and some of these impacts. So my hope is today, this will be a slightly more condensed version of that. But it's been a busy year. 18, 19 was a busy year and we're right on track to keep up with those same numbers and things. We still have about 158 active agencies that have current information in their database and are posting needs and opportunities and information about events to engage the community in their causes in our website that we support. The support we provide is related to building their capacity to effectively engage their volunteers. So again, how we do that is by providing volunteer management training. We participate with the other 14 volunteer centers in the state of Iowa and offer a statewide webinar series twice a year in the spring and the fall for folks who are volunteer coordinators, volunteer managers, volunteer directors, whatever their title might be, paid or unpaid, as the case may be in agencies, to get some training on the nuts and bolts of the volunteer engagement process. Everything from planning all the way through program evaluation and volunteer performance evaluation on those. We take that a step farther and the Volunteer Center is a national hub, offering training for organizational volunteer engagement and creating a culture of effective volunteer engagement from starting with leadership all the way through the organization at all levels to engage, to engage volunteers effectively and efficiently. It's research-based. It's a program that found, based on research about 10 years ago, organizations that have a strong culture of volunteer engagements outperform other agencies that don't with less overhead, operating on less overhead, not necessarily smaller budgets, but less overhead. And they receive a greater return on investment for what they do put into their organizations to engage volunteers in order to achieve their social mission. By as much as 300 to 600% of a return on their volunteer investment. We do panel discussions. We just had one yesterday and we had about 10 agency representatives come together and listen to a panel discussion with four community volunteers discussing their motivations for volunteering, what keeps them back, coming back. And it's about meaningful experience was what the theme we heard over and over again for engaging volunteers. They do it because they want to make a difference. One was retired, one was a working professional. I was not able to get anyone to skip class to come and speak from the youth perspective yesterday. But it's about being able to make a difference and use skills and talents and being engaged. And on the agency side, it's about, the important thing was being able to provide those meaningful, engaged experiences to the volunteer. So that's briefly what we do and, and support we provide to the agencies. We provide technical assistance when needed. Someone may call or say, can you help me figure out this job description for a volunteer? Is this appropriate for a volunteer? Do you have, we, we're trying to figure out what screening might be necessary or what are our options for screening volunteers in terms of background checks, interviews, references, probationary periods, all of those sorts of things. Numbers-wise, we are continuing to see our average number of growth year to year. We put on about somewhere between 2,000 and 2,500 new volunteers in our database a year. We lose somewhere between 300 and 600 volunteers a year that emails bounce back on. The majority of those are Iowa State addresses, so that's simply graduation and transience that way. We're on track to probably make the same, if not slightly more referrals this year in that, and I'm expecting it to be slightly higher because Greek Week has expanded their capacity for projects. Campus Service Council on campus is getting better organized and finding more opportunities. And Nevada High School has expanded their number of opportunities for high school volunteers to participate in their day of service. And I'm positive the weather will be nice for the two days we have Stash the Trash scheduled at the beginning of April. So I appreciate any positive thoughts for sunshine and warm temperatures on those two days. Overall, the only one, one concern I have is last year, we hit these numbers with 31 volunteers helping the Volunteer Center throughout the course of the year in terms of interns, volunteers, and my, and my wonderful board and committee members. This year, I have exactly three volunteers helping me support the work personally within my own organization. So smaller numbers have been carrying equal workloads, but they're doing a fantastic job and I'm thrilled to have all of them. I am exceptionally happy to report back to service enterprise. We were just recommended for renewing our certification as a service enterprise and as part of that recertification process, I had to report what our volunteer hours and efforts of our total hours and our efforts had been. And points of light came up with this number based on a combination of the independent sector value of volunteers as well as the Iowa Department Labor Statistics for annual wages. And estimate that we had a $3 million impact of volunteer service to Story County in our service area this last year. And so very proud of that and the efforts those make. We did 13 homes for winter weatherization. That program continues to see a decline in the number of homeowners applying as well as struggling to find volunteers who are available when homeowners are available to winterize folks' homes to help them save with their electric and heating bills. Family Volunteer Day, due to staff illness and not having other volunteers who could fill in and low registration, we did not carry out that National Day of Service before Thanksgiving. But Martin Luther King Junior Day, we saw a record 163 people participate in three different service projects throughout the day. And our Random Acts of Kindness is a February social campaign that we do, just to point out the importance of informal volunteering, being a neighbor, being engaged, community member. Coming up next week, we'll be revealing our bracket for the Volunteer Madness Campaign, promoting local agencies and their volunteer opportunities through our database and social media and electronic communications with the community. To be capped off with a team of celebrity volunteers working on a customized service project for the agency that wins the bracket in mid-April. Spring Into Service is a service night and Mixer will have small DIY service projects for ISU students in the community up at Clouds Cafe in Campus Town to, again, highlight do-it-yourself volunteer opportunities and promote the Volunteer Center, Stash the Trash. This is the final week to turn in nominations for our 15th year of presenting the Story County Youth Volunteer Awards. And we're, and we are again, supporting the community individuals who are supporting the Story County Blast Back to School Fair that just started meeting to plan for that. Other projects we do, we continue to see an increase in the custom projects we're asked to provide from workplaces calling and looking for team-building projects for their groups when they come, if they're bringing employees in or wanting to add to or supplement or demonstrate their commitment to their CSR or environmental stewardship and governance goals that they set for their corporate efforts as employee volunteer programs and seeing support for them. Leadership Ames in Nevada asked us again to lead a community action poverty simulation for their members in the current class to help understand different issues in the community and ways to get involved. And as I said, upcoming, ISU Greek Week will be doing a project day on March 31st and has been coordinating a donation drive for area or agencies. And we help them reach out to those agencies and get on the list for needed supplies as well as we're leading five of the eight project times for the different teams. Campus Service Day for the non-Greek community does the same idea and does a Day of Caring or a Day of Action on April 18th. And we're helping them, again, connect with the agencies, identify projects, and they use our system to sign up the student volunteers. Nevada High School Day of Service will take about five projects over to the high school for the kids that have alternative schedules or don't want to leave campus to do projects on. We're working with the City of Ames and the university to coordinate Rummage Rampage again as well and expect that that will, I'm expecting that that will engage more agencies this year. Last year, we hit the record of 24, so their goal is 25 with it being 11 days. And I've talked to at least five new groups. I wouldn't be surprised if that's 30 agencies that participate in Rummage Rampage. So thank you very much for your support and thank you for all your efforts to be civically engaged.
Thanks, Ann. Any questions?
I just have a couple. Thanks for your presentation. When you were referencing, excuse me, like your Greek Week and Campus Service and those, and then you referenced agencies, you were contacting agencies. Can you explain to me what agencies you're referring to?
Local nonprofits, groups and events that need volunteers or benefit from projects completed by volunteers.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
And rather than the students having to find the contact information and make 150 different calls or 30 different calls or anything like that, it's easier to use the pre-established network we have.
Sure. So are those the asset agencies or are they just broader to any nonprofit?
They're first sent to the asset agencies, of which usually about one-third of them respond back to these large project requests. And then we turn it out to the rest, particularly with Campus Service Crew and Greek Week. While we send them to human services first, they have a wide variety of causes and interests that they're interested in and wanting to be involved in the community and represent a wide variety of majors at Iowa State. So they actually want more than human service opportunities. And the large projects, events and large project requests don't often lend themselves to human services because of the stringent screening requirements volunteers have to go through, even if they're doing a project that won't directly interact with the vulnerable populations.
Sure, sure. No, I appreciate that. I just want clarification when you said agencies, who that was.
I just, I just like putting all of that out on record, so.
Then my second question is, looking into your custom projects, I'm looking at like Workiva and HAC or whatever. So are you actually going out and, going out and doing a service project with them? Or I'm not familiar with.
Yes. So that ranges everything from they may call and say, we'd like to do a project and the process is a bit of a screening on my end. What are their particular causes that relate to their corporate mission or priorities that they're interested in? What, how many numbers? What's the timeframe? Kind of scoping out the project and the ever-important question of what their budget for the project is. That generally leads to a momentary silence because volunteering is perceived to be free, which then we have to have a conversation about. The act of volunteering may be free, but it requires an investment of support to make it engaging and meaningful. From there, based on those questions, it might be something, a current event that an organization has coming up, like a 5K race needs volunteers. These people were looking for volunteers for help with their family drive, their holiday drive. Feel free to reach out to the local ongoing opportunities like food pantries and things like that. So it might be a referral and a connection, or it can be for a fee, the Volunteer Center will come out with, with supplies and information about the agency that the projects benefit. And we will take the project and facilitate it for them.
Okay, so that's, so for example, like the Workiva one, just because I saw it said made mats, sleeping mats or whatever. So that would have been something you would have gone into the agency versus them going out and doing a volunteer project. And then, okay, that's, I appreciate that, that just clears it.
And that again, comes back to a lot of times, it's the numbers and the timeframes. So bringing out 45 individuals from Workiva, when an agency can accommodate 45 people on site, there aren't a lot of agencies or organizations in the community that can handle 45 at one time. Workiva wanted to do it after dinner and 9:00, after a day's worth of meetings. They had employees coming from all over the world and so they had them for dinner and they wanted to do it between the hours of 6:30 and 8:30. And there aren't a lot of agencies that want to bring in a group at 45 or necessarily come out themselves and do it.
So then are those mats then, is that connected to like ERP? Or is, so that's how it is? Great, okay, thank you.
So my list of projects is updated by talking to agencies and their different needs. I won't take out a project unless I find a home for it first because it's got to have a benefit, otherwise I have to store it for an indefinite period of time, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So Ann, what would your life be like at the Volunteer Center, okay? If you were unyoked from asset?
If we were fully funded and in, with independent funding that was not as restricted, I think you would see that we would have double the impact in terms of the number of volunteers at a minimum. We would be able to have, and, and fully funded is, is in addition to the asset funding, is my full asset, the full budget of 175,000. I would hope to have a program coordinator on staff to coordinate days of service and supervise a team of volunteers to put on the three to five days of service to mobilize hundreds of people in the community, to get them hooked on volunteering. And a program director, volunteer manager specifically for Iowa State support. And I would hope we would be able to better expand our services to support high school service in the K-12 districts and supporting the development of 21st century skills as well as workplace volunteering is going to continue to be. Corporate activation is going to be an on-the-rice trend in the community. So our numbers would increase and our impact would be even greater.
So you budgeted an increase in non-asset funding this year?
Yes.
It was, I guess, the overwhelming factor about why we didn't give you an extra $1,100 this year. So, and you may have listened to that audio. So when you go to some companies and as you're looking at like Nevada High School and, you know, and these people are all saying, but this should be free, right? How have you been able to get them, or have you been able to get them to chip in?
It's, it's been a slow process. They are not, it has been a balancing act between, the first one is free so that you can see what a quality program, what a quality project works with and, and understands and what the cost is. Some of that is done in the interest of relationship building because for a long number of years of our, of our existence, we have stayed in the background and let the end results shine. And so we've had to go out and build our relationships first and just raise awareness about what we do. So some of it's that and a lot of it's been, how successful we've been, we've raised about 30% of our goals for the last three years for fundraising. Because people think volunteering is free. Your time is free.
You said you've raised about 30% of your goals?
Of our fundraising goals.
You raised, oh, you've raised your fundraising goals by 30%?
No, we've raised 30% of what our goal- We've raised 30% of what our goals are. We aren't, we aren't a fully funded organization.
Okay.
And when we don't have funding, the scale of our programs is what we limit. So we still do the programs, but we don't do them to the capacity they could be done.
Supervisor, do you have another question?
Well, I want to, do you have another? I'm sorry. Okay. Yes, I want to go back to just one other question. I was just trying to think what you just said, and Lynda just kind of generated a question and came in and kind of lost out. I wanted to go back. You, I think you mentioned that you had, were you saying 31 volunteers that helped you in the office, and then you were down to three?
Three.
So what is the barrier? Do you know what the, what are you seeing as a potential, or do you have a?
It's, it's a variety of factors. Recruiting, staff availability, opportunities, other opportunities I compete with. A large number of those students were from different classes and different projects, who then recruited their friends to come and help with the events.
Gotcha.
So they built my events team, and then when they graduate. So the biggest, the biggest barrier and the biggest fluctuation is, is that I'm operating on Iowa State undergraduate students.
Got you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
I have no questions. Thank you very much, Ann.
Thank you, and thank you for your support.
I would make one, too. Ann, next year, when you build the budget, when you started this process, which I guess actually starts this summer or whatever, so have some conversations, maybe with individual funders, maybe to let them know, give your story out there, have it just not go through the asset teams.
We're trying.
Okay.
We are trying.
All right.
So, we get, we get sent back to assets a lot of times when we try to have those conversations.
I know, just, please keep pushing.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item six, we don't have any minutes to consider today, so we'll head on to seven, consideration of personnel actions. Would entertain a motion to approve them as listed.
So moved.
Second. Headens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We'll go on to, motion carried. We'll go on to consent agenda, and again, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as listed.
I so move.
Second.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Headens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent agenda carries. We will go on to nine, public hearings. We have none. Ten is additional items, discussion and consideration. There you are. I'm sorry. Excuse me. I thought you were talking to me.
Sorry.
Additional items, discussion and consideration of RFP for medical examiner transports, Assistant Auditor Lisa Markley and County Attorney, Assistant County Attorney Ethan Anderson. Good morning.
Morning.
My name is on here because Lynda had asked me to, assisting getting this sent out, because, quite frankly, you know, the last time it was done was numerous years ago, and so I think the attorney's office and the auditor's office are the ones that work with this subject the most, because every bill that comes in gets approved by them before it gets paid. So that's, that's the realm of this. The other part is that the Bacon Funeral Home, who's had the contract since 15? It was, it was new at that point in time, first time we did that. They have given us notice that April 15th will be their last, their last transport date. It's very, I talked to Justin prior to this, not about this at all, and he just said that with his business growing, it's become harder and harder to be able to drop everything with just a single person running the business. So, totally understandable. He's been great to work with. I've really enjoyed getting to know his, his way of life. So, last time we sent this out, we got three bids. I did some research to try to figure out where we're going to send it. There are five funeral homes in the county, from what I can find. So I'll make sure we have everything we can find for Instory County to send these out to.
Ethan, do you have anything to add?
So, if you're ready to talk through the different additions, does everyone do that now, or?
I'm, I'm with the drawing mind, okay? Sorry, update, okay? Because it was brought to my attention that the ME was concerned that he wouldn't be able to say what's extraordinary. So I had thought about putting in maybe a surcharge or an additional fee if there's an extraordinary situation with a body transport. But, and I was thinking in my mind, things like very heavy or exceptionally decomposed or in really rough terrain, but the ME didn't feel comfortable with that, and instead said, "Let the funeral homes come to us on it." So I am withdrawing that. How's that?
Then I have no comments.
Okay. Sure. Do you have any?
I don't. If you're looking at the RFP at this particular time, no, I think it's laid out clearly. I guess my hope is that we would have somebody early enough who would want to take this on. April 15th seems like, you know, a ways away, but really it's not.
The timeline, I, in my head laid out, and I did write it down, it's not just in my head. If we send this out today or tomorrow with Lynda's signature slash blessing, your blessing, her signature, I'm hoping that we can get the bids back by the 30th, 30th or 31st, so that it can come to the agenda on 4/7, or 4/14. That still gives us time before the final, the final date of Bacon. The attorney and I have had a brief discussion, Ethan and I, I guess, have had a brief discussion about the actual contract, and he wants to review it. We had a situation arise in which he's like, "Maybe we should add this to the contract." So he wants to do that, I'm going to have him revise, or at least review it, so that he's comfortable with it, and those, that wording gets added, so we don't have that situation again.
I have a request there. I'm the one who contacted Dr. Whitehead about the other additional, and I would be, I'm kind of the liaison for the medical examiner. I would be willing to, in fact, would like to run any contract changes by him, even if they might not relate to a medical issue. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Just let me know, and I'll send it on to Jamie.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to clarify, at least, you've mentioned a couple times Bacon, but it's Rasmussen Funeral Home.
I, yes, I'm sorry. It was originally Bacon when they signed the contract, and sorry, that's in my head, and yes, I'm sorry, it is Rasmussen.
No, no, I just want to make sure that we are referencing the correct, the correct name.
I'm a little concerned about waiting until April 14th to make the decision if they're quitting April, if they're discontinuing April 15th.
I think we can make 4/7, April 7th. I really do. If we put a deadline, the 31st gives, basically gives them almost three weeks to get bids back to us. You want to do two weeks? That's fine. I-
If you think that'd be enough time. I, let's try it at least an extended of weeks.
Yeah. There's about five.
Of the five, are two of them locally owned, like in the county, and the other three corporately owned? Do you know?
I have, I have no knowledge. They all have, we did call one to double-check that they were combined with, it was a Story City and Ames combination, so, and, oh, I think maybe Ziri. So they're all three owned by the same.
Yeah. And the only reason I was asking is that if two weeks would be enough time for a corporate situation, you know, to go up the chain and down the chain. But my concern more in general is, what if we don't get a bid back? And what happens? I mean, literally- Using ambulance service, and it's expensive.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
That's what I think stirred us to do this contract in the first place, was there was an ambulance charge of like $1,700 at one point in time for a transport. And, and we were like, ah! So that's what stirred us to do it. I guess I'm confident that since we got, we did get three bids last time, and the same, and the same funeral homes are still actively, actively involved, that, that we will still, we will get something. I'm hopeful.
Okay.
Glass half-full.
Yep. Positive.
Okay, so you'd rather do two weeks, so maybe 3/20?
If nobody else has a problem with that, just to get it, just to get it done in plenty of time.
Done in plenty of time.
I don't want to have to go back to them and say, "Can you give us another week?"
Right.
So are you looking at, then, for them to be returned the 24th, which would be a Tuesday, or giving them till the end of the week, like the 27th? Did you have a specific, or?
If I, if I look at 3/11, which is tomorrow, to get it out, 3/20 is about two and a half weeks, right?
3/20, 3/25.
That would be-
One and a half, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So I'd go to the end of the week.
You'd probably want at least in the 3/25, right?
Yeah. Let's do 20. That's fine. It actually gives us one more working day, but that's all right. If, if that gets it, so you could get it on our agenda for 4/7, we're good. Okay. Okay. So is there, it's discussion and consideration, is there a motion? Is there some further discussion?
I'll move that we approve this RFP as presented, that the deadline for the RFP be March 25th. Is that the right date? Okay. All right. I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, Olson?
Aye.
Headens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Motion carried. Thanks for the work. So next is discussion and consideration of resolution number 20-77, application for FEMA grant for a generator upgrade for the administration building. I'm anxious to hear this.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is good news. I wish it was great news, but it's good news. I mean, we did hear back from Iowa Homeland Security and Emergency Management Divisions, basically the agency that's submitting the application to FEMA. Basically, the funds that FEMA allocated for disaster relief, they have picked projects that they want to allocate those funds for, but they thought there was a need for our project, so they want to submit it as a stacked project, which means that if the other projects come in underestimate and there's funds left, they would fund our project. But if there's no funds available after all the other projects are done, then we would have to reapply if another disaster was declared and FEMA released funds to relieve those disasters. It is, it's one of the scenarios that is what we presented for FY21's budget. It was kind of the worst acceptable scenario that we applied for. So it kind of comes down to, to submit the application, FEMA wants a guarantee that Story County would have their portion of that project funds available, which comes down to, on the application, you can see, it's, it's what they call the 75% FEMA share, and then the state would cover a portion of that, and then Story County would be obligated to roughly 5% of the approved amount, which was that 500, let me dig through my, the $543,470. And if you remember back, when we talked about this, they determined that 93% of this building is what they considered eligible. So then they use 93% of the $543,470 and come up with the $505,427.
And then we'd have to come up with 5% of that 505.
Yeah, which is the, which is the 110,000, well, we'd have to come up with 5% of the total cost, which is roughly the $110,052.68. Given the timing of this, we would have to also cover the design and engineering costs, and we would, and any contingency, which I would recommend a 10%. So with the commitment, it would be realistically $199,000, call it $400, Story County's cost.
So $200,000.
$200,000. Of, because the $543,470 does not include design and engineering or any contingency. So actual total cost would be 632, and then our share would be 200, so called a third of the total cost.
What did we, I don't have it in front of me, what did we have in our CIP for next year?
We had, we had anticipated this scenario with, because it was, there was like a total of five scenarios that we could be presented with, and there was three of which that I deemed I would recommend. The other two, the out-of-pocket cost would be too great to really consider. So we budgeted for this scenario for FY21.
So we need to make that guarantee now?
Yes. By the 30th of this month.
And is that, is the resolution 2077, is that acceptable as the guarantee?
Yes, that's what they, that's how they want, they presented it to me to present to you. That's the form that they prefer. Well, they require.
So, Assistant Auditor Markley, is there any reason that you would give us that we couldn't proceed on this resolution today? Thank you for shaking your head, as opposed to nodding it, for the record. You shook your head left to right. Okay. Any further questions for Joby? So do you have any thoughts on how likely this is, or when they will be able to tell us if it will happen?
Well, it would be probably at least a year from now that the funds would be available, which as far as our budgeting timeline, that, that works out in our favor. But it could be as long as two years before we know.
Until we know?
Till we know.
Oh, because all these other projects have to be completed.
Have to be completed, and then see how many funds are left. Now, there's also the possibility that after all the other projects are complete, there is funds available, but they are less than they are anticipating, and they may reapproach us with a different scenario, and then we'd have to have another discussion, because it could be in a reduced amount that they would match.
And we might have to come up with a little more.
Might have to come up with a little more.
If they don't have $400,032,000 available, then they have $200,000, something like that.
Yeah.
But I have one more other question. You said we, they wanted us to submit as a stacked project. Do you have any idea, or did they share with you how many stacked projects they have?
No, they did not. I could dig through, and I know there's a number of projects they are funding, and I believe it is stacked on top of all projects, my understanding of how it was presented to me, so that it's, it's not like one particular project has to be, come in under budget. It's all approved projects at the end of completion. It's whatever funds are left from that.
But for this, what other funds are, other funds are left, I'm not sure if I was clear, I wasn't, either I didn't say it right, or I didn't understand it right. So let me try it again. So there's all these projects, let's say there's six projects, just for, whatever.
Gotcha.
So if, is it, if they're total, if there's money left over from those, any or all of those six projects, we're in line. Are we first in line?
Now I understand what you're saying. That I don't know.
Okay. Could you try to find out?
Yes, I sure can.
I'd be real interested.
Yeah, just to see if, you know, how many total stacked projects there are, and if there's a priority on those stacked projects.
Yes.
Now I see where you're going.
So, in the meantime, though, in looking over the resolution again, we're putting the limit there in the resolution of the $110,000 and some odd dollars, okay? the limit there in the resolution of the 110,000 and some odd dollars, okay? So that we will get an opportunity, should they come back and offer us a less attractive scenario, we have the opportunity to turn that down, whether it's a year or a board does, or two years, or who knows when. So meanwhile, we are getting a generator then for a third of the cost.
Correct.
So I, I, I've not seen a downside at, to us to go ahead with this application. We've budgeted for it, we, you know, at a dollar amount, that would be.
Yeah. The downside would be, we could choose not to submit the application now and wait and see if a new disaster declaration is presented and that has associated funding relief from the federal government and reapply then for a better match. That would be the downside.
So there's no withdrawing from this if something better comes along?
Correct. If we, if we do this, then if, let's say, there's flooding this spring and a disaster is declared and FEMA dollars are associated with that, we would not be able to put this project towards those funds to try to get a better payoff.
But could, and we couldn't withdraw from this because there was a better opportunity?
Correct.
We're committed to this course of action rather than a, a new grant program that might come up.
But you'd also not know that we'd potentially have another disaster declaration.
Correct.
So.
Yeah.
What is this tied, what disaster declaration is this tied to, or what event, basically?
It was a flooding one, I'd have to look, I didn't bring those.
Another flooding one?
Yeah, it was a flooding one from, I want to say 2016.
Okay, so a few years ago.
But, yeah.
Okay, thanks. That's close enough, Joby.
So then the other thing is if we waited to say, not that we're hoping for another disaster, but we said, well, there's likely to be one because there's a lot of flooding, that would still put us a couple of years down the road anyway.
Potentially further, you know.
Potentially much further down the road. The only other option is to say, are we going to find the money ourselves for $632,000?
Correct.
Because that is the other thing, it does delay us waiting.
Yeah, and.
So.
And with delay, the cost is always going to go up. So total cost, so.
Materials, everything goes up.
Exactly. So it could be, you know, you might get a better percentage, you know, four years down the road, but the cost went up 10%. So then you end up roughly paying the same out-of-pocket, you just waited four years to do it.
So we have really four options.
Yes.
One is do, just do nothing.
Mm-hmm.
One is find, try to find all the money to get a generator now. One is to wait a year or two to see if we can get one at a third of what it would be, and we've, and our, it's favorable, looking if it's coming under. And the fourth one is just say, no, thank you, we'll wait till the next disaster declaration.
And then start a possibly two-year process.
And then possibly, and be even further down the road.
Yeah.
And be, yeah. So is it a bird in the hand versus two, two in the bush, or might be in the bush? Any other questions?
None.
And I'd just add that since we're talking about it, when the time comes, we would have to be another discussion sitting here of what to do with that existing generator that's out there. We can sell it, it's roughly worth about $9,300. We could put it at another location, but that's, now I know I wrote that down, roughly call it 150,000 to put it somewhere else. There's three potential locations, Engineers, Animal Control, and McFarland Park, they all kind of have a, rate it from doable to feasible to maybe.
Is it doable, feasible, maybe, depending on location?
Location and it's, yeah, location and the existing electrical service that is there.
Which is the better shot? Which one would?
The one that's doable is like, the Engineers complex. Secondary roads that do their shop and then their office building, and then it's feasible to Animal Control, and then McFarland Park would be a maybe.
I remember you had spoken to us before about that and why secondary roads was the most likely.
Yeah. And a lot of it's got to do with how its current electrical service is, is set up versus the type of generator it is, you know, and then there's other factors to think about. It's a 15-year-old generator, you know, do you spend that level of money on a piece of equipment that's that old, you know? Figure discussion for a later time.
I had a thought.
Go for it.
Since you love to write grant applications, right?
It's great. You've seen this one, it was 145 pages.
Yeah.
I'm just giving you a hard time.
You've got the template now, look at this.
Yes.
What I was going to say is if another, you know, not that we're hoping for it, but if there's another disaster declaration, you could write an application for a different location.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
None.
I would entertain a motion on resolution 20-77. I move that we approve resolution 20-77 and direct Joby to submit, submit the project or submit the application.
I second.
Okay. We've had plenty of discussion, anything else? Last minute? Go. Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Thanks for all your work on this.
Thank you. No problem.
Appreciate it.
Save a lot of money.
Now we'll just cross our fingers, okay?
Okay, next item, discussion and consideration of having the Story County Risk Manager and Outreach Special Projects Manager present quarterly activity and update reports to the Board of Supervisors during regularly scheduled board meetings. Supervisor Olson, I believe this is yours.
Yes, this comes about to bring to the board because I want to say it was three weeks ago or so, Supervisor Merkin, I think, reached out to both of us, I'm not quite sure, as she was having some discussions with Sandra King and LeAnn Harder about the outreach job, okay, and keeping board informed. And then a couple of weeks ago, we had a discussion after the board just, Todd, our risk manager approached us and was just talking about some, some things, just giving information to Linda and I. And I mentioned just there about, well, geez, maybe it'd be a good idea to have Todd Lindell come and present on a quarterly basis to keep everybody updated about what is going on with risk management. They are the only two that are not giving quarterly reports right now of the directors and/or managers that report to our internal and our external directors of operations. And so I do believe that there may be better communication as far as when all of our directors are coming forward, giving some information, that's just not to us and back and forth, but it could be so that the other department heads slash directors, et cetera, are aware of what's going on in these two positions, and both of them work with several of the other department heads and offices. And so that is why I brought it forward, is just to say, why would we not, it's, to me, it's more like, why would we not have them report on a quarterly basis so that we know, so that each, the other department heads can listen and the public can know what kind of activities are going on?
My one question, so the special projects person, LeAnn?
Right.
That's who you're referring to. I mean, she comes to us often on things. I'm just trying to figure the difference on that.
Sure. The reason that LeAnn comes to us on the special projects part at least, is that the Board of Supervisors needs to approve each one of those projects. So it might be, the outreach would be more what she might tend to give updates on. So yes, and that's having to do with it originally reported to the Board of Supervisors, plus the Board of Supervisors needs to approve those projects. We're the ones who assign those special projects to her. So, but she was bringing a lot of things to us that I think in restructuring a little bit, do we, there's some things that I, that I look at now, maybe we were approving that really could have just gone through the formal chain of command, and we could have received an update after the fact, or as it was going on. And, you know, this also allows us know, to know what is coming up in the future. I think that there's been a couple of examples where we didn't know something was coming to us, or all three of us didn't know that something was coming to us. So I think communication is so important, and this is a way that communication works so department heads are all able to listen to the same communication and to listen cross who they're reporting to also. Some people report to internal, some people report to the external. And then this is a way that everybody kind of hears on the same page what is kind of going on. And I think that makes for better coordination. It certainly allows all of us to know kind of what's happening.
And you'd prefer they come versus having information provided and having the internal and external directors come before us?
Okay. Right. And I thought about this, about what would be the difference, all right? Well, first of all, we're having all the department heads come, not the internal and external directors. The other thing is that I believe what the internal and external directors should be bringing to us at least, should be those types of things that some of them may be personnel-related, some of them may be projects that are in the very, very start, and really they haven't even been assigned to anybody yet, so the brainstorming, and they're bringing to us, to, they, in the past, it has been, that is brought to us individually. One thing I will let you know that I'm going to request again after this meeting is that with, under the previous scenario, with the previous external director and internal directors, there were, I had regular meetings with them. Now, it was once a month, and then they ran a list. Looking back on it, once a month wasn't enough, you know, wasn't enough frequency, but I'm going to start requesting that I meet with them every other week, and we don't have to do it together, we can do it separately, but just to get updates, so that it doesn't have to be a conversation in a hall to hear that a new policy is being updated, and I don't have to read in the paper that then the other person knew about it too. There's those kind of things that really should come to each one of us in advance, some heads up. And so, back to your question about why would they not all three come to the board, is that I feel that the internal and the external director roles are to oversee those types of things on a daily basis and on a personnel issue that wouldn't, that doesn't necessarily or shouldn't come to the board table. Some disciplinary actions that we're informed about, and we, and we're each told separately, we take no action on those, et cetera. So that's where I came down, back to the department heads, and the, are the ones who come and give that information to us. And these two positions, while they don't have other people that report to them, they carry that same impact effect and need to cross-communicate with, I think, everybody in the county. And the public also.
There was a lot in there, I'm not sure.
I understand that.
There was a whole lot in there, Laura.
Sure. Yeah, there was, because there's three years of be, having, you know, already observed what happened before, experiencing what happened before, experienced how communications were handled and cross-information. And it's, I'm feeling then, as we're making the transition now, four months into a new external director of operations, and that we need to make sure that we've got the best communication going forward, setting some goals, et cetera. So, for that. I don't know that the two of them coming to report would be necessarily reporting on the same level, that we've got our different department heads reporting on now. Der Moon comes and he tells us what's happened, who they've talked to, what the main projects are going on. We'll have, be hearing Barb Steinbeck later today. Joby submitted a report at least, you know, via consent a couple of weeks ago. So looking for that kind of activity that informs us, informs the public, and informs each other for good cross-communication. I think it also underscores, if I could say one more thing, it underscores that both of those positions are important positions in interacting with various department heads and other people, and could help with, in both of those positions, they have the unenviable task, sometimes needing to come in and ask for a department or departments to make some changes or take a look at some process that isn't, hasn't been done before or is new, or, and, for example, in risk management, being asked to come in and do assessments on the jobs about each position, et cetera. And so I think that that help, would also help underscore that these two positions also have a vital function, have vital functions in the county, and, and by emphasizing that, by coming to the board.
Just based on the comments that you've just made, wouldn't that be something that would go to, if there's a policy change to, like, the internal or external directors that they would then present to us?
I'm just trying to just clarify. A policy change in itself, yes, they would, but I think we should know in advance that at least it's being worked on. The other thing is, just a heads up, used to, I'm, I, what used to happen is that both the internal and the external made regular, just little, oh, by the way, this is happening. In my particular structure, how it was done, is that the internal, who's still here, and the previous external, would come and meet in my office once a month. And then occasionally I'd get the drop-by, just like with the other two, who, you know, the other two previous supervisors, and say, oh, by the way, we're working on this. Okay? By the way, we're working on this. We already, on our agenda, we've added, we want to know what's coming up. I mean, right? And so, so this is a, not only an opportunity when they're coming to us, the one-to-one, it'll, you know, there's no feedback there, so it's, we're not in any way trying to avoid the open meetings law or whatever, but so that everybody knows what everybody else is working on, so that there, there's not a tripping over each other, there's not duplicate efforts out there. Communication is the way to be efficient and to make sure that what's happening, we're aware of also. Also, let's say that the, somebody's working on a policy that they've taken it upon themselves to do, that right away, the feedback from the three individual supervisors separately might be, oh, that, that's a new policy, why are we even doing this? Or are, we're updating this, why are we updating this? When it's not time to update it, there's been no real changes to update it, there's been no complaints to update it. So that's an opportunity for that. Also, to find out on some of the projects, get updates in between from our quarterly reports, like what's happening in various departments. And as I said, there's been disciplinary issues that have been brought, just, hey, heads up, if this happens, we don't deal with them formally unless they have to come all the way to the very final. There's, I'm beginning to feel, based upon my previous three years here, that there's some, there's some information that's not flowing, and I want to try and make it flow the best way possible, that is the most, that allows everyone to be informed, to, for, especially the supervisors, for us to hear individually what may be happening that we need to know that's going on. Many times, I think that department heads have come and said, hey, just want to give you a heads up, or have gone to their internal or, or external director of operations, say, hey, want to give you a heads up? And then the external director needs to come to us. And of course, then we know, we need to get some updates, that we need to respond back to staff, to the internal or external directors, you need to bring that to us in a board meeting. So there's a lot of reasons. And back to what I'm talking about here today, has to do with having those last two entities who have some very important jobs, a couple, but we're not hearing from them quarterly like we are everybody else.
I guess my last question's going to go to Alyssa. Can you, yeah, probably go to the mic. So can you, can you explain kind of the reporting process for like the risk manager, how that, how that comes to you or for any potential changes?
Yep, yep. So safety and risk management is under, has always been under human resources, so, so I just kept it, and then went to the board and asked for a risk manager to kind of handle and really dive into those safety things. So I've always been over risk management and safety for the county for the last nine years, almost. I meet with Todd weekly, we go over every aspect of his, of what the risk manager handles. We go over every aspect of his, of what the risk manager handles, any policies or, we don't really call them policies, they're safety programs. In the safety world, that's what they're called. We go through them and then he brings the template technically to the board for approval and then rolls it out to all the departments. Because every department, depending on what function they do, their safety program's going to look a little bit different. Hearing conservation is going to look different for animal control than it is for secondary roads. If he wants to discuss stuff with department heads and elected officials, we do that at the quarterly department head and elected official meetings. He also handles the safety committee meetings where we have representatives from every, pretty much every department or office there and they discuss things and go back to their departments and offices and do that. So, I do have, like I said, I meet weekly with the risk manager and we go over things. And then if there's anything that needs board approval, then he puts that on the agenda.
Okay, so, passing that along to the supervisors then, what do you think is the most effective way? And then also, that's one question. My next question is, if the risk manager would feel that there still doesn't seem to be good communication that he has with all of the departments or buy-in from all of the departments, how are you handling that? Because I've heard nothing about that, Alyssa.
Issues with departments?
Picking them up or say like one department sending one person to the safety committee meeting countywide, but another person is doing the internal department safety meeting. And so, maybe communication isn't occurring in that department?
I've encouraged the risk manager to go out to those safety meetings. I think it's important to get them out and working directly with those departments. If he has issues, I haven't had many issues. We've worked through a couple of things, nothing major. I just meet with the, with the risk manager and handle that because the risk manager does work underneath the director of internal operations. Nothing has risen to the level that we need to take anything to the board. If it did, we would be right here in a Tuesday morning board meeting.
So, I am going to start initiating these meetings again like we used to have, okay? So that I at least have kept a word and then the other two supervisors can do anything that they want to do on that. But, so, you're not feeling that, that position in spreading widely over all of the, interacting with all of the various departments, etc., you're not feeling that that's at the same level as you, like when Joby comes and reports or Barb comes and reports?
No, they're not departments. They have separate departments that have certain functions. The risk manager handles safety, which is underneath the human resources umbrella, in my opinion, always has been. We don't have a separate risk management department. It's been, it's, it's all underneath the human resources director. The board did do some reorganization a few years ago and now it's under. But, but under my position, I don't oversee the risk management department. Risk management is a part of human resources. So, I still consider myself to be the human resources director and oversees that.
So, would you be willing to come quarterly and report on what's going on?
We can do that. A lot of the safety stuff, that it's discussed in the safety committee meeting, whether it's incidents and different things like that, can't be discussed at the board table unless you go into closed session. Is my understanding, a lot of those are confidential, you know, work injuries. We do have medical information, different things like that.
So, there used to be a board member who went to the safety committee, but we ended that last year? Were they, we, yeah?
I quit going when I became chair.
Okay.
It was a time issue.
Yeah, so, so that, then that was one way that information came?
It was not, as I recall, what we did last year, that was not a formal designation. It was simply, I both think both supervisor Sanders and yourself said, well, Linda, because you're a new supervisor, maybe you'd want to attend those meetings for a while. And I did that, but then, as I said, when I became chair, I said, that's something I had to let go. And, and I feel like Alyssa's got it well-covered.
So, alright, so that's why I brought this up. I have some very definite opinions about information flow here, okay? So, I, so you're, you would be happy to come and let us know what's going on with risk management quarterly?
I can do that. I guess I just don't understand why it would, I mean, if it, risk management, I mean, we cover human resources. And, I mean, there's more functions than just safety and risk management underneath this.
There's the insurance, he handles insurance claims.
He does the liability insurance. I handle all the other insurance.
So, updates, say even though we are not to know specifics that would give away particular people involved, etc., to get some information about possibility of work claims, that type of thing in general, to know we've had work claims?
We do that twice a year. NAP Tedesco actually come and does, does a formal presentation where they take the aggregate data and kind of put it in a, in a way that we can't really determine who, who was the employee that was injured and different things. So, they come in semi-annually and do a work comp and liability insurance review. Is that, I mean, do you want it to come more?
That's just one facet. As you said, he does other things besides risk safety, risk management there. So, what about when he's out there working with various departments? And what kind of work is he doing with them and what kind of programs might he be enacting?
Sure, the programs all come to the board. So, anything that he would be enacting comes, comes to the board. And we, we did that as far as, it's called a safety program. And, and there was some questions, does the board need to approve each of them? I think to have, to, for the risk manager to be able to go out and say, you need to implement this, we wanted the board to approve it, so that, you know, there was a little teeth in that. And do that, I mean, the department could say, why do we need to do this? So, that's why, that's why I do have him come to the board every time he has a safety program. He's had two or three. And there's a list of other ones that, that he'll be working on as soon as he can go out and meet with those departments. This next year, I'm going to encourage, and again, I meet with him weekly. We've discussed about having, you know, going out in the department, seeing what they're doing. Just spend the day out there, see how they're performing. I mean, he had to develop those relationships first. This was a new position. We, I couldn't send him out there because they'd be like, they're just watching over my back. He's there to work with the employees, not to kind of have that where they get, I don't know, they feel intimidated or something when the safety coordinator's out there. So, he has worked on those relationships over the last couple of years. And now will be going out and working. He's already doing it with a few of the departments. And hopefully get them out in the field a lot more this year, is my goal for the, for the risk manager. I mean, I'm happy to bring it and discuss, I mean, and any questions you ever have. I feel like my door's been open. I, I'm used to people just stopping by and asking questions.
It's difficult to ask a question when you don't know where to start with that question. Which is why, like I said, I'm going to be requesting that you come every couple of weeks. We'll have that discussion like we used to have with Sandra, the same, okay? And stuff. Because you can't ask the question if you don't know about it. And when you hear something that is then away, so then in having to check it out, etc., it's so much better if information flows, okay, that way. Okay, so if you'd like to do that instead and she's willing to come on that, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that since they aren't departments, it'd probably be better to come from Alyssa. One, because then you can separate out things that you can't not share with us because they're direct personnel-related. Whether we need to specifically say quarterly or not, or just say, I'm not sure. That, that I'm just, I'm open to or whatever on there. Because we do meet, what is it, quarterly with the elected officials, department heads there. I know that's not the open public that you're referring to, but I'm just saying that gives, does give us all some information at once.
Gives us some, but it's very targeted as opposed to, oh, I'm working on this policy or.
Can I just ask about the, the whole process with the policies has been the last nine years? Is, I put them on the agenda and bring them to the board and then they go out for a second, seven-day review? I've never had to get approval to actually look at a policy and make revisions to it.
Let me say something, because I haven't said anything till now. I've just been keeping notes and listening to what everybody else has said. But let me answer that question. I have not ever felt like, you know, I didn't feel like there's any problems there. And I would say regarding what LeAnn Harder's done, LeAnn does an extremely good job of sending us an email and saying, board, here's something I'm going to bring to the board, giving us kind of an advanced look at that. And you're saying, I'm going to bring it to the board. You don't say, can I bring this to the board? And I don't think I want to get, put up a gate that say, you have to have my permission to put something on an agenda because you're professional staff, you know your jobs, you know what needs to be done. I'm very, I'm satisfied with the way things are right now. I trust the professional judgment of staff. I think that Todd's position and LeAnn's positions are within the board office. And I think that's the difference between them as staff. Todd is very much HR, like you said, you know, LeAnn's position is a little different, but they're within the board office structure. And the people we have come and give us, the department heads that we have come, give us quarterly reports, are outside of the board off, board of supervisors' office structure. So, I went a little further than I was going to just in, but in answering your question, I don't feel like you have to ask for permission to work on a policy.
I am concerned however, though, when somebody works on a policy that they take upon themselves to decide needs to be changed without necessarily, there are some policies, I think, that are more central to board operations, that they are bigger, they affect and they impact everyone. And so, while you talk about asking for more programs to, how much time is someone putting in on it or whatever, all of us need to make decisions, certainly about how we devote our time and what we devote and whether we feel that this is something that would be supported by the board. And so, I don't share Supervisor Merkin's feeling all the time about how some time is allocated or what, where some emphasis is placed. But that's difference, that's why you have three of us here, okay? So, and I do like how LeAnn lets us know what she's working on. But we even discovered with that, you know, that like we decided to make some changes. Box City and, and one that we're doing away with, etc., that we need to make sure that people are allocating their time on what's in the best interest always for the citizens.
I don't want to get into a position where we're micromanaging. And that's my concern, is that we'd be micromanaging. I think one of the things that we've had, just listening to the discussion here of, we do have proposals that come to us and we have other departments that come to us that don't necessarily tell us what's going on ahead of time down the pike. Things kind of evolve and it's, oh, I need to bring this to the board because I need to make this change because this circumstance came up that I wasn't necessarily anticipating. I feel like we're wanting to tighten things here compared to some of the other, the other department areas. And so, that just gives me some, some cause. We do have professional people and I certainly don't want to, I want to make sure that we are respecting the professionalism and the role that we've placed them.
I'm not questioning the professionalism so much as where the line is between what's a supervisor decision and a supervisor to enact something and when is a, when it's staff to consult with supervisors.
We can always say no. Somebody brings something to us, we don't agree, we can say no. That's our job, is decision-making. People bring us decisions, we can say, no, I don't agree with that, with that proposed change. We can do that from here. And then the public, then it's transparent and the public sees why. They hear, you know, you're concerned about the public, understanding why we're making decisions. Well, let's make them here at the board table rather than telling staff back there, no, don't bring that to us.
I, I mean, I would just be repeating what I said before about my concern about how some decisions and what is being taken on, thinking as far as, as how allocation of time and resources and the authority to do.
I'm concerned about allocation of time. And I don't know of another supervisor who's requested that our directors of external and internal operations meet with that supervisor once every other week. I'm not going, I feel like I'm well-informed. I'm not going to ask that.
That's fine. We're just going to ask what we want.
I think it takes a lot of time away from work.
I think that that's how we learn. I mean, the, I, when I have to hear about, I feel when a supervisor has to hear about a policy walking by an office, that's, that's a problem, okay? Their policy's coming forth. I feel when I have to hear gossip about what may have, or may have not happened on a contract negotiation or where it got stifled, I feel that that's a, we've got a communication issue. So, alright, we've spent enough time on this. I am going to go ahead and ask for that unless you two want to override me right here or next week and make it go to a formal vote about me being able to sit down with the internal and external director. Huh? Well, this is a, if we don't make a motion, we don't make a motion. So, so it's dead. Yep. So, so, yeah, I'll make, I'll make the motion. I move that we have updates on risk management and the, and special projects and outreach, whether that come from the employees themselves or whether that come from the director of internal and external operations.
Is there a second? Okay, hearing no second, the motion fails. Is there another motion on this topic? Okay, then we will move on to discussion and consideration of a paging proposal between Stroy County and Marco for the Justice Center. Barb Steinbach. Good morning, Barb. Still morning.
Good morning, board. The screensaver hasn't kicked in. Oh. Shelley, can you log in? It's logged in under you. So, a little background on the project. I made a little spreadsheet and you did receive a copy of the quote, correct? Did you have any questions on the Marco quote? Marco is the vendor that we decided to go ahead with. Since this project did not qualify for RFP guidelines for the dollar amount, we selected four vendors that we'd worked with in the past that also do this type of work, asked them to submit quotes. And so, then we formed a paging committee. And I'll bring up my little vendor comparison. So, the committee members were Alyssa, myself, Joby, Joel, Kyle, Micah, Nick, and Todd. And we all got together and we looked over the quotes that were submitted by these four companies. We reached out to Embar IT, they had done some work at the EOC. And Communication Innovators have done the same kind of work. Black Box had put in the original system and then Marco. The original system was put in in 1998 and never completed. It was part of the old phone system. And I was told, I wasn't here then, but I was told that ran out of money, decided not to complete the paging piece of it. So, the speakers are still in the ceiling, but things have changed at the Justice Center. So, each one of these companies did a walkthrough and proposed additional speakers and some other things. And then we came back and we asked for additional things and facilities. So, after going back and forth a couple of times, we compared. Our goal was not to go by lowest cost. Our goal was to go with the best value and how we felt that the vendors responded to our questions. We went back a couple of times with different questions. And actually, we still have an amplifier there from 1998. And Marco asked if they could take it back to their office and test it, and they did. And they said, this is still top-of-the-line stuff. They recommended that we just keep that and save $700. We elected to go with a new one just in case, but to use that as a backup. So, we did unanimously decide, we wanted to go with the Marco quote. They did offer additional 20, they, they're proposing 22 speakers in addition to what's already there. The other companies suggested 19. Where the three extra ones are is outside the squad room. The project manager just stood there and she felt that maybe that was a black area that wasn't going to be reached by other speakers. So, she proposed three extras and we asked her, well, can you just put the cabling there perhaps? And then add speakers later if we feel that that's what we need to do? And she said that would work fine. One of the reasons we threw out the Communication Innovators quote, we wanted this to be a separate system from the phones because we can do paging on the phones right now. But in case the network is down, we wanted something standalone and separate. And Communication Innovators advised that we don't do that. And they said they don't do anything else but network. So, they declined to come back with a revised quote. The others are all running copper wire so that they can have this as a separate system. And then we looked at the hardware cost and the labor cost. And some vendors, you know, declined to give us that information. So, I just put together what I could hear. The total cost is in this column, I hope you can. The total cost is in this column, I hope you can see that. It ranged from $8,900 to almost $12,000. So coincidentally, the quote we liked the most, the Marco quote, did come in the lowest. They have, there are six weeks booked out right now, they thought they could complete it in five days, which was generally what everybody thought they could do, was a week. And what we thought this probably would be is maybe a prototype for the other buildings as we move forward, let's see how this goes at the Justice Center, and then go forward with perhaps the HSC and the admin building. Now, we do have money budgeted for this, we have quite a bit of money budgeted, so this came in well under budget. Do you have any questions?
How far under budget?
We budgeted $30,000.
So you could do another building.
Well, and that's what I was wondering, if we wanted to do that or carry the money over, or what we decided to do after it was implemented.
Well, I'm really glad to hear that you said, we don't want something attached to our phone system, because that was the purpose of looking at this.
Correct.
Because phone systems go down, we know that. In emergencies, you've got a whole bunch of things that aren't reliable. This is a simple mechanical, it's electrical, but we have generator out there.
Correct.
So it gives us, it gives us the communication we would need in emergency when some other things might not be available.
And if something was, who knows what the emergency might be, a network would be more vulnerable as a target rather than an amplifier. We are proposing two, one to be in dispatch and one to be in master control, so we're covered there.
Would we want to consider this? Would we want to consider, when could we do this? If we have $30,000 available? Consider approving this proposal and then just asking if it also costs out our other building, our other two main buildings?
We could.
Just for, would they be willing to do that?
The project manager is very eager. She is, you ask a question, you get an answer within an hour, so she's very eager to, she's very receptive to any questions and very responsive. So if we ask that, I'm sure she could go through and do a walkthrough. And I guess my feeling was, I kind of wanted to wait to see how this worked and to make sure that we were happy with our choice before we extended the offer to the other buildings. They do know that there is an opportunity in the other buildings.
Can you also clarify for me, Barb? I think you said that with the additional speakers, Marco would do 22. Are you saying that they would do 22 or just do 19, but then have the capability to add on more, or is it 22 with the capability to add on more?
Well, the 22 would be everything, there wouldn't need to be any more than that. They just saw that there was a dead area and she's going to, we asked if maybe they don't cut the hole for the speaker but just run the wire there so that if we decided, yeah, it is a little bit of a dark area that they could just put the speaker in.
Got you, got you, got you. And then I noticed like Embar has like two wall, or the other ones are one. Can you explain that one? Because I'm not that technical, so I'm not quite clear on what that means.
Would they consider the wall speakers? This would be back in the facilities area. Joby mentioned sometimes it's loud or there's nobody there, and so that would be the horn and then also a wall speaker in the maintenance area.
Got you, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I'd say right now if you have a project manager who's really on this project, maybe get the other numbers just so we have them.
Sure.
And then let's see what, how happy we are with this system. And six weeks they can put it in?
That was last week, her time, she said they were booked out six weeks when I spoke with her last week.
So they might be able to get it in before the end of this fiscal?
Yes.
And we could get some testing done yet this fiscal?
Yes.
Bring it back if it seems like a good idea for us to reconsider?
We had asked all of the vendors initially to, if they could get everything in by May 15th, and they all said yes.
Good.
So that gives us a good cushion there before the end of the fiscal year.
Joby, do you have anything to add? Since you were involved, or Alyssa? Alyssa, I'm sorry. Jeez, I don't know where my mind is.
I'll just come up.
Okay, would you please?
I didn't stretch anyway.
You look like you did.
Barb pretty much covered all the important stuff. I mean, it was, you know, the two that, it was Black Box and Marco was kind of the two that everybody seemed to like the best. And they were, what did you say, Barb, 90% the same equipment, it was just a little bit different in the wattage of the amplifier. The Marco one kind of gives us the capacity, not that there would ever be a need to at the Justice Center, but there is the capacity that we could add more speakers to it.
Right.
So, they're all pretty basic technology and that's what we was looking for, you know?
And to give Black Box credit, they had put in the initial system and so they had all the diagrams and the schematics, and we did offer that to the other vendors to base some of their accounts on. Unfortunately, when Black Box revised their quote, a lot of that, they don't do in-house anymore, they contract it out, so that raised their price quite a bit.
Okay. Any other questions?
None.
No.
Okay. Thanks for the work, folks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Would you entertain a motion for the paging proposal between Story County and Marco for the Justice Center?
So moved. Yeah, I don't know if I need to be more detailed, so.
Okay, Shelley.
She need the dollar amount?
Nope.
Do you need the dollar amount?
Okay, I move that we move forward with a proposal between Story County and Marco for the Justice Center for, what is it?
I second.
Okay, Edens.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
And I see you, thank you, and I see you have a quarterly report for us.
Yes, I do.
It's the next thing, so.
And I'll make this brief, I know we've been here for a while. Just wanted to give you an update on our hardware systems. We have replaced all of the Windows 7 computers, so yay. Now we're good until Microsoft decides to do the next update, which they promised us that Windows 10 is the last one.
Yeah, sure.
We'll see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They know the world's coming to an end, that's why they said that.
Yes. And I think I mentioned earlier that we needed two new servers, the cost was just really prohibitive. So Joel built those himself, the two new servers, and saved the county about $15,000. So we got those installed and the one thing you don't get with that is the three-year maintenance that they build in, but we've never had an issue with having to utilize that. So we said, you know what, we can fix or replace almost anything that happens, so we're going to go with it. We do have some changes with the phone system, we did, we had some, when we did the new contract, some of the licensing for like the EOC and the Amber Alert, which are phones that are rarely used, thank God, but still we wanted to reduce the licensing on that a little. So they did finally get those resolved, it was a long time coming. They're doing a new accounting system too, so we've been, every month going over the invoice saying, oh, this will be the last month it's going to be right, and I think we're finally there, so yay. They did offer us some cost savings on the upgraded internet connection at HSC. We did replace the Centrillink connection, if you recall, a couple months ago, and went with an Orion connection since they already had a connection coming into the building for the phones. Well, another problem with our invoice, when we're splitting out the connection charges per departments, we couldn't figure out where the HSC one was. We could definitely see where we were being charged for the admin connection but not HSC. And they told us, well, you know, since you got that internet connection, we just bundled it on there and we're not charging you for your phone connection. So that's an additional $400 a month they're saving us, which is excellent. Never had a vendor say, oh, since you're already using our services, we'll just give you this for free, so. Good for them. We are doing also, trying to get rid of some of the wind stream faxing. Seems like every other month, as of last week, we had another wind stream cut. So we've had a test system in dispatch, they've been testing the IP faxing, which is internet faxing. They thought that was real successful. And then Ted at the Treasurers Office wanted to try it out and he's been trying it now, getting the numbers ported over. So eventually we'd like to do that for every department that wants a fax number. It doesn't hurt to have one or two pots lines in every building, but still this would be a good cost savings over the $1,200 a month wind stream bill, so. Network expansion, I think we're going to move ahead finally with the radio project for the animal control. The tower was delivered last January, I did reach out to the vendor and they're asking if we can wait until April. So they're planning to put it up in April, which will be great because then you approve the Shelter Pro project for the animal control to organize their records. And once the tower is in place, then they can use that software. So that'll be exciting, they can't wait. And, you know, we tossed around, do we install it now and let them practice with it, or do we just wait? And the vendor said that any work they do now will not transfer to the real installation, so we decided, you know, why waste their time putting stuff in now that won't carry over? So hopefully in April, they will be ready to do that. Another thing I wanted to add to our network expansion, we've had some DOT fiber for quite a few years, never used it. When the DOT put their cameras in along 30, they offered us a couple strands. At the time, it wasn't dark fiber, which means there were other things on it, we'd be sharing the traffic lane with other companies. We decided not to go with that, but in view of all the wind stream issues, our connection, when the wind stream connection is cut, our connection between here and Ames is down, as what happened last week, Linda. So what the DOT fiber will give us will be a connection to Ames, and right now Kyle is turning it up on both ends and we're doing some testing, so. And we did find out that we can have dark fiber, which means we can have our own strand, nothing else on it except us. So if we can do that, crossing our fingers, then we will have a redundant connection between here and Ames, other than our phones, which are redundant right now. So that's exciting. And originally the DOT wanted to, proposed charging us $15,000 for that and we did budget for that, however, they turned around and leased some of our other fiber that we had for $15,000, so it's kind of a wash. So no money was exchanged, we just have a contract with each. So that worked out pretty good. I'm all about not having to spend money and getting something in return.
You've got a lot of good deals, it sounds like.
You know, it just helps to work with other vendors. And I don't know if you've had an opportunity, I just wanted to talk about the upgrade we did to our SIS Aid, which are ticketing system. I'm still trying to get over the new look, I know change is hard, it's a little different, so the more you use it, the more accustomed you'll be to the changes. It does give us more accountability and more features so that we can track where our time is being spent a little better. So, yeah, it just, like anything else, it comes in time. Under some miscellaneous items, we did just present the paging project. Sounds like we're going to move forward with that, yay. Also wanted to talk a little bit about Story County's role in the multi-agency group. Initially, the 2080 agreement split out the workload between the three different entities. ISU took care of the network, City of Ames took care of the server updates and the server maintenance, and then Story County housed the hardware. There's been some opportunities, and I proposed to the multi-agency group that Story County do the server updates. We do, we update all of our own servers. Unfortunately, the people responsible for that at the City of Ames were torn in different directions. So some of the updates weren't being done, and I felt it was of utmost importance with the 911 network, that everything is patched and up to the latest version. So Joel is doing that now when he does ours. And what we do, the first Thursday of every month, we have blocked out a time and I sent out an invite to all the entities that this is the time that the servers may go down. I know it's not fun, it's not convenient, and maybe you'll have to write things down on a piece of paper until the system is back up, but we need to do those updates. And so far, that's been very receptive. I know there was a lot of pushback before, we can't be down, we can't be down. I said, we can't be like Westcom in West Des Moines, where they're, apparently it was a ransomware attack and they were without, their cars couldn't communicate to their dispatch for a whole weekend, so, yeah. So anyway, I'm excited that we're doing that, we've already done one month, and so far, so good. And then I also just wanted to address, well, we're still looking for a computer support analyst, so if you hear anybody looking for a computer job that has some experience, we have an opening. What I wanted to also address, and Lisa, you brought this to my attention, and it is very annoying, all the robo calls that we're getting. I went to a meeting the other day and came back, I had six missed calls and three voice messages, and it was the same, trying to sell me a credit card. You never know what we've done, we tried to block the numbers, but the number you see on your screen isn't necessarily the number that it's calling from.
Right.
So it doesn't do us any good to block it. What happens is kind of biting us in the butt, when we get an open records request asking for all contact information for all the Story County employees, that's what they're doing, they're selling our phone numbers, and so we're getting wave after wave of robo calls. So I don't have a good answer how to stop that. And it is annoying if you have your voice messages going to email as well, then you've got to delete it in two places. So just, I hear your pain, we have it too. Unfortunately, in IT, we're in a hunt group, and I'm at the end of the hunt group, and they always leave a message on my phone because I'm the last one. But anyway, and I also just wanted to show you some of the, I had Tim do some reports. We've always wondered, now this is the intranet, and I'm sorry, this isn't very big. Can you see that, Loris?
I've got it on my screen.
Okay.
Thank you. This one is, thanks for asking.
So we're always curious, well, you know, we've got the intranet, people complain about it all the time, how many are actually using it? So the bottom number is the actual number of time, the actual number of hits on the page, and then these are the different individual hits. So risk management is getting the most, it looks like, which is great, because I know Todd spent a lot of time on his page and Kyle helped him a lot, and I think he's got it to where he wants it to be, so that's great. Did you have any questions about this one? Because I've got two others.
Thank you, no.
No.
That's great.
And then the service tickets, I always like to do these in a pie chart, I think it gives you a good idea of what's there. It looks like the majority of our time is spent on software, and I think I pointed out in the past, that used to be printer support until we got the Marco printer solution, so that's great. We're able to spend a lot more time on software, and it just depends on what's going on with the updates. Software and hardware, which are the two key areas that this computer support analyst will support if I can ever get him hired, or her. On-call is getting smaller and smaller, we're educating them as to what actually we can help with after hours. A lot of times if it's a Raycom system, we don't have access to that and we can't help. So that's, education has been very helpful there. And these are, then my last visual is the website hits. It looks like, now this is just for the first quarter, and really it's a slim first quarter, but animal control, it looks like it has quite a few, and it's property tax time, so that probably is a good reason why the Beacon property reports, I know these are skewed a little bit, they're kind of off one, but depending on the time of the year, this will fluctuate.
So just since you said they're kind of skewed, so like the Beacon property records, just for example, so there's two lines there, which?
Yeah, it's the bottom one.
It is the bottom, so that's what all we should be looking at, is the bottom one.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And like, as it gets closer to November, I'm sure we'll see the elections one shoot up.
Sure.
I assume vehicle registration will stay the same. I'm surprised it isn't a little larger because of the blackout plates that were offered.
See a lot of them.
Yeah, you do.
See how this new red, white, and blue, or whatever that was, that they just?
Yeah, I haven't seen that one yet. So that is my report, Board, do you have any questions for me?
I do, and it's back to on-call, really.
Okay.
So a couple of weeks ago, we had a Greenwich District meeting here in the evening, and we had problems, it would have been, I guess, just on equipment, and we had bad sound again, all right, a lot of screeching, et cetera. So as we were explaining to people, we're sorry, we don't really have anybody who can come in and fix whatever was going on, all right? So what would you suggest, Barb? I mean, we weren't using any-
I mean, we weren't using any of the A, you know, the AV equipment or anything like that. Should we call the on-call person? We didn't do that. I mean, you know, it seemed it was pretty clear, it was through the speakers and the recording on that, but what do you think we should do in that situation, when we're outside of your normal operating hours?
That is why we have an on-call person.
Okay.
And they get compensated if there is a call, so, and they, they get hours anyway, but that is why we're here. It's 7300 any time of the day, it automatically gets forward to the person on-call, and we're not quite as restricted as we used to be, because we have an on-call go-bag. It has a laptop in there, it has a Mi-Fi device, it has everything, no matter where we are, we can remote into the system. Maybe we couldn't have remoted into that system if it wasn't online, but maybe offer a few helpful suggestions or things you could try.
Okay.
So yeah, definitely, don't, and I know engineering had the same question, you know, the wireless went down at 7:03, and like, why didn't you call, you know, on-call, the help desk? We could have definitely turned it back on for you. So yeah, don't hesitate to call, that's what we're here for.
I think that screeching stuff was the microphone, and now we've got that bit, so.
Okay, so, all right. Thank you, all right, yay.
And I think that was a help desk ticket, so.
I don't have any questions, but thank you for your presentation today.
Thanks for all the good news.
Thank you, Board.
Okay, on to other reports. We have none. Upcoming agenda items, does anybody have any suggest? Nope. Going on then, public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on the agenda. Board may not take any action due to requirements of the Open Meetings Law, but may do so in the future. Any member of the public who has any comments? Okay, if not, I'll close public forum number two. If I opened it, I consider I opened and closed it.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, we're on to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates, and announcements from the supervisors. Start with Supervisor Olson this week.
Okay. So I attended the CyRide meeting last week to give a brief update on the Herda changes. Obviously, I went as a member of the public. The key for CyRide was that those changes will not impact Dylaride's service in the City of Ames. CyRide has put its plans for new bus facility on hold. How that might impact Story County in the future would be that there was some discussion about maybe Herda coming on at the same time, you know, renting some of that space or whatever, and there might have been an ask for capital coming in the future for that. So now that's on hold. Herda is seeking a new, less expensive place to rent as of July 1st, okay? I, tomorrow afternoon, I'm waiting to hear back from the Herda office. I may go down and do some cash flow projections down there, depending on availability of the bookkeeper. And out of the, I will be out of the office on Thursday and Friday for ISAC Spring. I will be on vacation Wednesday, March 18th to Sunday, March 22nd. I've heard back from a couple of people about the Rural Economic Development Summit. Linda sounds definitely, like she wants to be a go. Lisa, you said it was interesting, I'm assuming you'd like to go? Okay. I know Leanne Harder had indicated to go. I'll step away then, since I'm, you know, this would be for future information, so that frees up, I think, a spot. And I was talking to Dustin before, Dusty Ingram from the AEDC before, about the possibility of inviting a couple of our rural mayors or whatever seat if they want to go.
Is Dustin interested in going?
Dustin can't, he has a conflict.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's unfortunate for that, it is. So I thought what I would do then is turn that over to Sandra at this point, as far as making arrangements, et cetera, moving forward for that, yeah.
I know it's a to take, send, or they like at least a team of three, or is it only limited to three attending?
No.
Okay. A minimum of?
A minimum of three.
That's what I didn't understand when I said.
Right, so, unless one of you wants to, but otherwise, I would turn that over to the Director of External Operations.
No, that's fine.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, so that's pretty much what's on, what's on, except for the meeting tomorrow about the COVID.
So I'm assuming you're gonna go to me next. So I had a meeting yesterday, I went to the Juvenile Justice Lunch Meeting. They had a presentation through YSS on a new e-recovery app, which is really quite interesting. It is an app on the phone. It is targeting right now kids that are transitioning out of services that YSS necessarily provides, but still need some support and contact. And so it is a specific app, and it's just brand new. It's only, they've only started it like within the last month, so they're still building folks or individuals to join it. It does have staff from YSS who are also a part on this app, so it kind of oversees to make sure there isn't anything appropriate, inappropriate kind of going on. It is confidential. They do, the individuals who do sign on to, to be a part of the app, also sign off, that was one of my questions, that like on a HIPAA thing, so that they know that, that there would be somebody else on there and some, you know, the conversation in there. But really what it is, is to help with kind of that encouragement, maintaining their, maintaining their sobriety, whether, you know, it's drug or alcohol, giving them resources if they're having some challenges. It's actually a evidence-based, it's a national app that they are instituting here. So they're hoping that within, you know, another six months or so, that they will have more information in regards to, in regards to that. So that's kind of a neat thing. Then there was also a presentation, and I apologize, this card is in my office, from Iowa State, kind of one of their recovery groups as well. It's a newly formed group at Iowa State, so there's just the processing that goes on to become a recognized kind of group or club at Iowa State. So that is something new that they're getting off the ground as well, just through the counseling services that they are doing this as well. So it is great to see some other initiatives that are going forth to just help individuals that are kind of struggling. I then in the afternoon went to the Children's Mental Health Advisory Group. We had another meeting where we're still kind of gathering some information. We had a discussion and a presentation yesterday, really over what is a serious emotional disturbance, or SED. The DSM-5 is pretty broad in there, and so really kind of having people have a better understanding, what does it mean to have a serious emotional disturbance? And then we'll move on to kind of identifying more of our goals and the direction on there, but it kind of felt that some of the individuals needed, we all needed to be on the same page as to what we're talking about. So that's what we did yesterday. We, and then yesterday, we also had a presentation on First Five came to speak to us, and how First Five works, how that referral goes from a pediatrician to First Five, what type of follow-up First Five does, and what type of information then does the pediatrician get back? So if a doctor recognizes that, that someone might benefit from services through First Five, First Five gets that referral. They said they generally, they're, they call people within 48 hours, they want to talk to that referral, they do document, because there are times they get that referral, the family says, yes, we'd like to get that connection, and then they try to call them, and then they just never connect with them.
Did the group have any opinion about Invest in Iowa proposal, the proposal, you know, or more specific concerns about the funding?
They did not, we didn't even get into that. I think that's more that has gone, has been kind of discussed at the Governing Board.
Okay.
And so we'll have that meeting come up again. There, they've had, they're still kind of monitoring it, they're kind of laying out some of the concerns of, are you, are we kind of switching out a potential unstable system for a new unstable system? And Russell Wood with the CICS up in Franklin County is the point person down. He is a registered lobbyist down in Des Moines. I know he has spoken before the committees and has spoken with the governor from the county's point of view as well. So we do get information back from him. So today, or I guess my rest of the week is tomorrow, then we do have the, looks like we have a, is it a department? Yes, our, our department head and elected officials meeting from 9 till noon. And then tomorrow afternoon, I do have a childcare meeting, the one that's meeting with the workforce group. I have that in the afternoon. And then Thursday and Friday, I'm down at the ISAC conference. Thursday night, I am also, will be attending the Farm Bureau meeting. And Friday, the Friday of the ISAC conference, I think that ends at 11:45 or noon. Then we come back, I have a DCAT meeting, which I'll probably do by conference call, because then we have a shared department recognition, so I want to be back for that. So I've already told DCAT I will participate, but I will participate by phone for that one. So that is, and then Monday, the 16th, I do have, although we don't, I don't have the final time, it is we do have the Boost Hiring Committee meeting we'll be meeting to review the applications that have come in. I have signed up to attend the manure training, but if the Hiring Committee meeting is meeting in the morning, I will have to miss that one, so I'm just waiting for confirmation on the time for that particular meeting.
Yeah, I did sign up for manure training.
It's interesting, I mean, I'd like to go, but I just can't do everything, unfortunately.
That would be manure application training, we should probably be a little more specific.
Yes, that is a good, yes. Manure application training.
Okay, let's see. Last Thursday, March 5th, Supervisor Edens and I attended the State of the Community meeting in Ames, and what I found very interesting in that was that everybody was talking about COVID-19 and everything that they're doing. And as has been mentioned, we're having a meeting tomorrow with our department heads and elected officials to discuss that. A lot of talk about collaboration and, and better ways we can communicate better. Let's see. I went to the League of Women Voters Legislative Wakeup Saturday morning, and I also heard their concerns about the Invest in Iowa, you know, is this really more funding, both for conservation efforts and for mental health, or is it just a shift in funding kind of thing? And I think that's something we're gonna have to watch very closely. Also discussed concerns about various things going on in the legislature, which would further reduce county local control and home rule. A lot of zoning things have come up in the legislature, further restricting the county's ability to zone various things. Did not make the opioid task force Monday morning. The cat insisted on, he needed to go to the vet, and I got shredded because of that, as, as Loris noticed when I showed her on my Band-Aids when I got in, I did survive it. But anyway, we had the watershed assessment work groups monthly meeting, or yes, or Monday? Yesterday, that was just yesterday. Talking about a lot of issues, drainage district law in particular, and septic ordinance, it's coming up, we had a good discussion about that, and are continuing to work our way through that report. Conservation Board met last night, they are continuing to do work on the Dotson property, not ready to come to the Board of Supervisors yet, but I've been continuing to work with the developer, and in this case now, there's a new engineer working with the developer for the developer, so they're continuing to refine how they can take care of sensitive areas there whilst still allowing some development and what that means. Upcoming then, tomorrow, we have the COVID-19 meeting with department heads and elected officials, and ISAC conference Thursday and Friday, and I think that's what I've got on my agenda, so. Any other announcements from the supervisors?
No. No, I guess the one thing I did not mention is that the Story County Mental Health Expo is looking to, again, hold it in September. They're narrowing down some potential speakers on that. They're gonna meet again on the 20th, they were doing kind of a survey, so probably we'll have an idea on the 20th, who that final speaker that they want to pursue to, to speak in, so then I can share with you later who that will be.
They've had good speakers last couple of years.
Yeah.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Edens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. We're adjourned.